Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Shawn Atkins and I'm the Chair of the East Point Planning and Zoning Commission. At this time, I'll call our May 17, 2018 meeting to order. Staff, would you please sound roll call to establish a quorum?
Commissioner Lovett. Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Fan.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins.
Present.
Commissioner Tucker.
Here.
Commissioner McKnight. Commissioner Maxwell. Commissioner Mitchell.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask if you would please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. If you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on my nation, undivisible with liberty just as its own.
We're gonna edit. Is it possible for, I think that they are having trouble seeing beyond you. So, would that be okay? Okay, excellent. So we'll edit. All right. Commissioners, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt our agenda.
Motion to adopt agenda.
It's removed by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that we adopt our agenda as presented. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the agenda is adopted. Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to approve our April 19, 2018 meeting minutes.
Move.
Is there a second?
Yes.
It's removed by Commissioner Tucker, seconded by Commissioner Mitchell, that we approve our April 19, 2018 meeting minutes. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, our April 19, 2018 meeting minutes are approved. We'll now move on to our new business. Just a word to all of those who are here with us this evening. We've got one, two, three, four, five cases on the agenda tonight. All of the cases do require a public hearing. After we read our first case, I will then read the rules for our public hearing. They will apply to all of the cases this evening. Staff, would you please sound our first agenda item under new business, 2018 Vias Invictus dash 007 dash 04?
Case number 2018V dash 007 dash 04. The applicant is Tallulah Properties LLC. The location is 2870 Randall Street. The applicant seeks a three-part concurrent variance to reduce the side yard setback from eight feet to four and a half feet, the five-foot driveway setback to zero feet, and the minimum width of the driveway to twelve, from 12 feet to 10 feet.
Thank you. At this time, I'll read our rules for public hearings. As I stated before, these rules will apply to all of the cases this evening. Public hearings before the Planning and Zoning Commission shall be conducted in accordance to Section 10 dash 2219 of the East Point Zoning Code and Development Regulations as follows. Persons both favoring and opposing the proposed case will be provided an opportunity to address the commission. The applicant for the zoning case or the applicant's designated representative, if any, will be entitled to speak first, followed by other speakers in favor of the proposal for a total of 15 minutes. Those who oppose the proposed zoning case will then be permitted to speak for a total of 15 minutes. By majority vote, this commission may increase the total time for speakers, provided that each side is given the same amount of time. If there is more than one speaker for a side, the Chair or the Presiding Officer may limit the time allotted to each individual speaker other than the zoning applicant. The zoning applicant may reserve a portion of his or her allotted time for rebuttal. Speakers must adhere to the rules of decorum. Prior to speaking, each speaker shall identify him or herself and state his or her current address. Each speaker shall speak only to the merits of the proposed zoning item under consideration, shall address remarks only to the commission, and shall refrain from making personal attacks on any other speaker. The Presiding Officer may refuse the speaker the right to continue if, after first been cautioned, the speaker continues to violate the rules of decorum. You've heard our rules for public hearings. Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing for 2018 Vias Invictus dash 007 dash 04.
So moved.
Is there a second?
No.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tucker, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that we open the public hearing for this agenda item. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now open. Is our applicant present this evening? Tallulah Properties LLC? Would you please step forward to the podium, state your first and last name and your current address.
Hello, my name is Stephen Sores. Our current address is 945 Hiram Davis Road, Lawrenceville, Georgia. We have a property at 2870 Randall Street. And we are in, we are seeking the variance for the driveway, of which it is now on zero lot line, and it does not meet the criteria for the width of 12 feet. It will be approximately 10 feet. We are going to withdraw the addition that, which was to be pushed onto the setback. That has now been changed, and we will withdraw that this time. My wife, Lorraine Sores, is here with me, and actually, we're just looking for the variance.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning case? Any other proponents? Any other proponents? Are there any opponents here to speak against this zoning case? Any opponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner McKnight, that we close the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Case number 2018V dash 007 dash 04. The applicant is Tallulah Properties LLC. The location is 2870 Randall Street. Staff recommends withdrawal of concurrent variance part one to reduce the eight-foot side yard setback as required in Section 10, 2062 EC, to four and a half feet. Staff recommends approval of concurrent variance part two to reduce the five-foot setback as required in Section 10 dash 4050 to zero feet for the installation of a driveway. And staff recommends approval of concurrent variance part three to reduce the minimum width of the driveway from 12 feet as required in Section 10 dash 4057 to 10 feet.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard from the applicant, you've also heard staff's recommendation. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Tucker?
I'll make a motion to approve concurrent variance part two.
Can you turn your microphone on for us, please?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve concurrent variance parts two and three.
Second.
Is there, it's been moved by Commissioner Tucker, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that this body approves concurrent variance for part two and part three. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. Concurrent variance part two and parts three, those are approved. Do we need to dispose of the portion that was withdrawal, for withdrawal?
Yes, I would just propose that you, you know, make a second motion to allow the withdrawal of the concurrent variance part one.
Thank you, okay.
In the future, you might be able to just dispose of it in one motion by saying that you make a motion to approve per the staff recommendation, which would encompass that withdrawal, and therefore obviate the need for a second motion. Second motion.
I was gonna go with that, but I did not want to do that, as staff's recommendation is a recommendation for the body, so I wanted to be a standalone from this body. So, Commissioners, we do need to dispose of the withdrawal.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to recommend approval of the withdrawal of the original motion.
Of the, of, of the portion regarding...
Just the withdrawal with concurrent variance part one.
Concurrent variance part one.
And this is not in the form of a recommendation, because this is a variance, so the form of the motion should be, motion to approve withdrawal of concurrent variance part one.
Yes.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay. It's been moved and properly seconded that this body recommends to, that this body approves the withdrawal of concurrent variance part one. It's been moved by Commissioner Tucker, seconded by Commissioner Lovett. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. This body approves the withdrawal of concurrent variance part one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff, would you please sound our next agenda item, 2018 Zias and Zebras dash 003 dash 04, and 2018 Vias Invictus Cias and Charles dash 002 dash 04?
Case number 2018Z dash 003 dash 04, and 2018 VC dash 002 dash 04. The applicant is Swift Stop Incorporated. The location is 1337 Virginia Avenue. Applicant seeks to rezone the property from CLC Commercial Limited with Conditions to C2 Central Business District. Applicant is also seeking a four-part concurrent variance to reduce the rear yard setback from 20 feet to five feet, relief from parking lot landscaping requirements, reduce the minimum landscape area requirements within setbacks, and reduce the required number of parking spaces.
Thank you. Commissioners, this item also requires a public hearing. At this time, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing for this agenda item.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's removed by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner Mitchell, that we open the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now open. Is our applicant present this evening? Swift Stop Incorporated?
Yes, sir.
Would you please step to the podium, state your first and last name, and your current address?
Good evening, I'm Alex Hensley. I live at 234 Colony Center Drive, Woodstock, Georgia.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please? I lost your name.
Alex Hensley, and I live at 234 Colony Center Drive, Woodstock, Georgia. I am the civil engineer for the project. This is Mark Light. He is the developer for the project. And so what we are proposing at 1337 Virginia Avenue is the renovation of the existing fuel center, which will eliminate the existing convenience store that is located underneath the canopy currently. It's going to be relocated to the rear of the store. There's an existing subway at the rear of the store as well. Those are gonna be combined into one store, approximately 5,000 square feet. We are reducing one of the driveways to add as much parking as we can, and also reduce traffic congestion at the intersection of Lee Street and Virginia Avenue. The whole purpose of the project is to kind of beautify the property, bring it up to the current codes with what we can. We are seeking some variances associated with parking, just because of the nature of the site. It's so small, we're having to work with what we have to. The building setback in the rear, it's the convenience store, there's nowhere else to put the building. There's an existing building located in the rear of the site. And a reduction in landscape setbacks, because we are held to the existing pavement where it is today, and then also a reduction in curve island pavement, island landscaping in the pavement area due to, we're trying to meet as close to parking count as we can.
Yes, if you could come closer, so the Commissioners can see.
And so the convenience store is...
You both can't talk at the same time, I'm sorry.
The convenience store is from the 1980s, it's original to the site. So we are going to add four fuel pumps underneath the canopy. The canopy's gonna be reskinned, pavement's gonna be done, landscaping's gonna be done.
Let me turn my mic around, so you can talk through it, sir. There you go.
Hi, this is the proposed site plan that we're looking at doing. And then we also have the existing, and I have one other board to show you, a representation of what the new building looks like.
Second.
That's the station on the corner, right?
Yes.
That's the Chevron on the corner.
One needs to go to staff for the records, so if you would please hand that to staff.
Let me just see it, wait a minute, before they go. And this is, this is the, I wanna make it clear, this is the old subway, and you proposing to turn the subway into the new convenience store, with everything in one place, with these islands? And so you proposing one, two, three, three islands for gas pump? Four islands for gas pump?
We'll have to ask questions after. So it's just a public hearing now, so he'll have to ask questions later.
Yeah, I got some.
But staff needs to have that for their records.
Yeah, give it to them, give it to them, 'cause I got some questions.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning application? Any other proponents? Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning application? Are there any opponents here to speak against this zoning application? Any opponents? Seeing none, Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? It's removed by Commissioner Tucker, seconded by Commissioner Fan, that we close the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Case number 2018Z dash 003 dash 04, and case number 2018 VC dash 002 dash 04. The applicant is Swift Stop Incorporated. The location is 1337 Virginia Avenue. Staff recommends approval of rezoning the property from CLC Commercial Limited with Conditions to C2 Central Business District. Staff also recommends approval of concurrent variance part one to reduce rear yard setback required in Section 10 dash 2073 ED from 20 feet to five feet. Staff also recommends approval of concurrent variance part two to allow relief from parking lot landscaping required in Section 10 dash 6009. Staff also recommends approval of concurrent variance part three to reduce the five-foot minimum landscape area within setbacks required in Section 10 dash 6010 to two feet in the front yard, three feet in the side yard, and three feet in the rear yard. Staff also recommends approval of concurrent variance part four to reduce the number of parking spaces as required in Section 10 dash 2154 from 30 to 20.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard from the applicant, you've also heard staff's recommendation. At this point, I entertain a motion.
I'm gonna motion on the first one, motion for approval for rezoning. That's my motion for that one, and then we'll come back to the second one.
There's a motion on the floor to rezone?
Second.
Should we do the rezoning and the concurrent variances all together, Madam Attorney?
Well, first of all, I would suggest that you make your motion to rezone, from what category to what category, that might help. And then I, I think you can do all of the concurrent variances in one motion unless, of course, there is a Commissioner who objects to one of the three variants.
I do have objection to one of them, that's why I'm gonna ask you some question on the other one, that's why I want to do it that way.
Sure.
So my, my motion is to rezone from CLC, the LC, to C2. That's my motion.
Okay, and just for clarification, it is a recommendation. Your motion is to recommend approval to rezon the property from CLC to C2. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Tucker, that this body recommends approval of the rezoning of this property from CLC Commercial Limited with Conditions to C2 Central Business District. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. The ayes have it. This body will recommend approval of the rezoning. And now, Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion for the variances.
I'll make that motion for discussion. Approval for part four variances, for required parking space, reduction in setback, and relief for landscaping requirement, I'll make it, that motion for discussion, and discussion only.
Commissioner Fan has made a motion to approve the four-part variance to reduce the number of required parking spaces, reduce setbacks, and relief from landscape requirements. Is there a second?
Second.
It's removed by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Tucker. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
Discussion.
Yes, Commissioner Fan.
Could I get those pictures again, sir? Oh, shit, the pictures again.
You want the rendering?
The rendering, the one with the four, the four islands? Thank you. The question that I have, we all are familiar, most of us are familiar with that site right there. That, it's on that corner, and we already got a lot of congestion and traffic in that area right there. The, the issue is for me, is that you're asking for reductions and setbacks, because that, that subway used to be a car wash, that is now a subway. So you're taking the building out and you're creating pumps, so you're moving those pumps back closer to the actual building that just stands now? Or you proposing to bring that building out further on the lot?
So the existing building is being removed underneath the canopy.
Correct.
And the subway in the rear is being removed.
Okay.
Both are gonna be placed together in one building to provide easier convenience for customers in the rear of the property in approximately the same location as the existing subway. And then four pumps will be installed underneath the canopy, matching where the existing convenience store used to be located.
Correct. So we, you can come in off of, I don't know the name of that street, I think it's Elite Street, and then coming off of Virginia Avenue.
Yes.
The question that I was asking is, how far is that pump or that building is gonna be in there? You're asking for setbacks. So I'm trying to figure out where, where is it gonna sit on the property itself? Because it's already, it's a service station across the street, it's hard getting in and out of that one, okay? And it's hard getting out of this one, both of them. So that's why I'm asking the question. I know you got the entrance on both sides, coming off of Cleveland, I mean, off of Virginia and off of Elite Street. How far is it gonna sit back on that property? That's, that's the question. And what is the setback for?
That's gotta be more helpful.
Thank you.
Do you have to speak into the microphone?
Yeah.
Well, this board might be more helpful for you. I think to answer your question, between the sidewalk of the new building and the edge of the islands, we've got close to 30 feet. It's 28 and a half feet for maneuvering. There will be no parking here. And as Alex had said, we're closing this one curb path here along Lee Street, so that we've created more parking here. So you'll still have your two curb paths here, but only one curb path along Lee Street. Okay, all right, does that...
Yeah, it does help me, but you know, when I look at that, and I compare that to what's across the street, there's no parking over there, and that, that parking, and you wanna, you wanna limit the parking spaces on this property, and it's gonna be a convenience store. It's already a problem on the other store that would park, going in that convenience store. So that, that would be my concern in terms of the limited of parking on the property itself, for people that would be going in the convenience store. That would be my only concern, is that, that, that reducing the amount of parking space, sir.
I remember the last comment was that we have contracted with the hotel across the street.
There you go.
We have contracted with the hotel across the street where we've rented parking spaces, where our employees for the convenience store and the subway will be required to park here to leave all of the spaces that we have on site for customers.
How many spaces is that? I don't need a mic, I can talk loud. How many spaces is that?
Here, across the street?
No, here.
We've got, we're showing 20 spaces, plus we have 16 spaces underneath the canopy, but as per the codes, we aren't really giving credit for the 16 spaces under the canopy where the dispensers are.
So you're saying that 20, there's 20 parking spaces on this piece of property? There's gonna be 20 parking places on this piece of property?
Correct.
For patrons?
Yes, sir.
If it's 20, I can go along with it's 20, because I, I just know across the street, there's an aisle over there, you can't get in and out of there.
Thank you, Commissioner Fan. Are there any more comments, questions, or concerns?
I just have a comment that, that I applaud you guys for coming in. That's a gateway street to both College Park and this point, what's there now will not be missed, I don't think, and this is a really attractive building that you're bringing in, and we appreciate you.
Commissioners, any more comments, questions, or concerns? There is a motion to approve the four-part variance made by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Tucker.
Just a point of order.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, it's just come to the staff's attention, and that in the staff report on concurrent variance part one, with the reduction of the rear yard setback, the required section for the record should be 10273D E D. So just wanna make sure that we have for the record the proper section from which the variance is being considered.
Okay. Yes. Commissioner Fan has a question.
I have a question, stay there. Frank, is that accurate? Is that gonna be 20 parking spaces on that, on that lot?
The site plan shows 20 parking spaces.
All right.
Okay, again, Commissioners, there is a, a motion to approve the four-part variance made by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Tucker. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, this body recommends approval of the four-part variance. Thank you. Our next agenda, our next agenda item is 2018 Zias and Zebras dash 005 dash 04. Staff, would you please sound this agenda item?
Case number 2018Z dash 005 dash 04. The applicant is Mutaru Olaiwola. Location is 1408 Lyle Avenue. Applicant seeks to rezone the property from R1A to R2. R1A, Urban Residential, to R2, Two Family Residential.
Thank you. Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open.
Who says we open public hearing?
It's been moved by Commissioner Mitchell, seconded by...
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lovett, that we open the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now open. Is our applicant present this evening?
Sir.
Would you please step forward, state your first and last name, and your current address?
My name is Mutaru Olaiwola.
Speak into the microphone, please.
I have a loud voice, I don't... Mutaru Olaiwola. The property is 1408 Lyle Avenue. My address is 3316 South Court Drive, Smyrna, Georgia, 30080. I'm seeking rezoning for 1408 Lyle Avenue. Right now, the property is a duplex already, and all I'm doing is renovation. I'm not adding anything, I'm not subtracting anything from it. It's just a total rehab. The property right now is two duplexes, Unit A and Unit B. Each one has two bedrooms, one bath. One downstairs, one upstairs. And we're gonna change the old thing, the inside, not outside. We're gonna do new wiring, new plumbing, new age back, and general contract department. And my contractor is already talking to his office and getting all the permits together.
Anything else you wanna share with the Commissioners?
I think it's a great thing, because the property's been abandoned for eight years, so I'm trying to bring value to the city, and, you know, give the people here somewhere to stay. And it will not be an asshole after it's done. It's gonna have value to the neighborhood and to the city of East Point. And I've already spent some money. Mr. Lee is taking some of my money already.
Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning application? Any other proponents? Are there any opponents here to speak against this zoning application? Any opponents?
Move that we close the public hearing.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Mitchell, seconded by Commissioner McKnight, that we close the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Case number 2018Z dash 005 dash 04. The applicant is Mutaru Olaiwola. Location is 1408 Lyle Avenue. Staff recommends approval of rezoning from, of rezoning from R1A, Urban Residential, to R2, Two Family Residential, with the following condition. Property must be readdressed. Once new addresses are assigned, the owner will be required to post the property in accordance with Chapter 8, Section 10 dash 8003. And just for clarification on that, on the staff analysis, there was an error, and it stated R3 in, in the staff analysis. That's supposed to be R2, Two Family Residential.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard from the applicant, you've also heard staff's recommendation. At this point, I entertain a motion.
Move that we approve the rezoning from R1A, Urban Residential, to R2, Two Family Residential, with, with the stated conditions from staff? Do I need to state the conditions?[1783.41] with, with the stated conditions from staff. Do I need to state the conditions to readdress the property?
It's just a rezoning, so your motion has to be in the form of a recommendation?
Recommendation, please.
Yes.
You don't need to restate the conditions, just as per staff's recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Mitchell, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that this body recommends approval to rezone property at fourteen oh eight Lyle Avenue from R one A, urban residential, to R two, two-family residential. Is there any comments, questions, or concerns?
No.
Hearing none. At this time, entertaining motion. At this time, all in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. This body recommends approval. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Staff, would you please sound the next agenda item, two thousand eighteen U as in Umbrella dash zero zero one dash zero four?
Case number two zero one eight U dash zero zero one dash zero four. The applicant is Michael Glinter. The location is two one four six Dodson Drive. Applicant seeks a special use permit to establish an antenna tower and associated structure in the R one, single-family residential zoning district.
Thank you. Commissioners, at this time, we have to open the public hearing first. Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing, please.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Mitchell, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that we open the public hearing for this agenda item. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now open. Is the applicant present this evening, Mr. Glinter?
Yes.
Okay, would you state your first and last name, and your current address?
My name is Michael Glinter, eighty-six oh nine Scenic Highway, Pensacola, Florida, three two five one four. I have with me Ms. Gibbons, and she would like to address you.
Mr. Glinton is trying to get a special.
State your first and last name, and your current address.
Jack Willen Slaughter, Gibbon, thirty-six fifty-two Carmarthen Circle, East Point, Georgia. Mr. Glinton is trying to get a special use permit for a tower at twenty-one forty-six Dodson. There used to be a radio station there about ten years ago, and I think that it was owned by Fellowship of Faith and another radio station at the time, that was used for the city. The city used it to advertise. Our ex-mayor was able to go on and let the city know what, the citizen know what was going on. Well, Mr. Glinton bought the property, and he's trying to open that radio, that tower back up. But because it's been closed, he has to get a special use permit. And what going to be at that location, the whole, the property is fenced in, so no one can get to it. But he need to put a building on it so he can have electric to be able to broadcast from that antenna. And he made a promise to me that he would open up the radio station for the, for East Point uses. It's a gospel radio station, but we'll be able to use it to do some broadcasting for the city of East Point. And we're asking for y'all approval to let him get a special use permit.
Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning application? Any other proponents? Are there any opponents here to speak against this zoning application? Any opponents? Seeing none, commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Mitchell, that we close the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye. All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now closed. Thank you. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Case number two zero one eight U dash zero zero one dash zero four. The applicant is Michael Glinter. The location is two one four six Dodson Drive. Staff recommends approval of, sorry. Staff recommends approval of the special use permit for an antenna tower and associated structure in the R one, single-family residential zoning district.
Okay. Commissioners, you've heard from the applicant, you've also heard staff's recommendation. At this time, I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion needs to be in the form of a recommendation, please, Commissioner Fan?
Motion to recommend approval. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Everything is a recommendation. Thank you.
Well, not everything, but that one is. There is a motion to recommend approval by Commissioner Fan, that's seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioners, are, are there any comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. This body will recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is two thousand eighteen Z as in Zebra dash zero zero six dash zero four, and two thousand eighteen V as in Victor, C as in Charles, dash zero zero eight dash zero four. Staff, would you please sound this agenda item?
Case number two zero one eight Z dash zero zero six dash zero four, and case number two zero one eight VC dash zero zero eight dash zero four. The applicant is Atlanta Community Food Bank. The location is zero Red Wine Road. The applicant seeks to rezone the properties from C two C, Central Business District with conditions, and CL, Commercial Limited, to CUP, Community Unit Plan. Applicant also seeks a concurrent variance to reduce number of required parking spaces.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, before they, uh, we open up them for the, the public hearing, is this a recommendation to?
This is, as a resorting.
Okay, I just want to make clear. All right, a recommendation is not, we're not approving that. We just recommend, I just want to make sure.
Okay. You're, you're quite welcome. You're quite welcome. Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing for two thousand eighteen Z as in Zebra dash zero zero six dash zero four, and two thousand eighteen V as in Victor, C as in Charles, dash zero zero eight dash zero four.
Motion to open.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner McKnight, that we open the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now open. Before we start our public hearing, can I just see by a show of hands how many are here to speak either in favor for or against this zoning application? Okay, make sure you've completed a speaker's card, and for our public hearings, as I mentioned in our rules for public hearing, each side is granted fifteen minutes to speak. Because we have so many speakers tonight, I'd just like to ask this body if you would consider extending that time? Should there be a need to do that? And I can take that in the form of a motion?
I move that we extend the time if necessary for speakers.
For this public hearing. Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner Tucker, that this body will extend the time for speakers, should there be a need this evening for this public hearing. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. So at this time, will the applicant please step forward, state your first and last name, and your current address?
Yes, Lauren Clayton with Wilson, Brock, and Erby. Address is two eight four nine Paces Ferry Road, Atlanta, Georgia. We are here today to seek a rezoning for the Atlanta Community Food Bank's headquarters, which is currently located in the city of Atlanta. I have the renderings up here that some of you have seen. These are for the front entry and courtyard area of the office space. We're seeking a rezoning, and we withdrawing the variance. We do not need any variances. We initially thought we needed a parking variance, because there is a significant amount of assembly space in this facility. There's about seven thousand square feet. Once we did the calculations pursuant to the code, we realized that we were right at the proper number, which is five hundred, and we withdrew the variance. Current property is zone C two and CL, and we are seeking to rezone under the Community Unit Plan Development District. The first listed permitted use in this district is community facility, and that is exactly what this location is. There has been certainly some conversation around why that might not be the case, and I'd like to address some of that as well. In the preamble of the CUP, there's a number of intentional use, intentional functions of CUP. In terms of our site, and I'm going to go ahead and put this board up. So that's going to be the landscape plan. And one of the first things I think you'll notice in terms of site usage is that a significant portion of that site is left completely untouched. Under the CUP, there is an intention to preserve natural amenities of the land by encouraging scenic and functional open areas. Of the sixty-four acres, there will be eighteen built on and twelve point two disturbed, leaving forty-six acres untouched, and we will accept the zoning condition to leave it that way. And we will get to the proposed zoning conditions in just a few minutes. Additionally, it provides for an efficient use of land, which is also the case with this particular site. And finally, Subsection F of the preamble provide neighboring properties by, protect neighboring properties by requiring larger peripheral lots adjacent to larger lot developments. With this particular development, the closest residential property line to any paved area is one hundred and sixty-one linear feet. The closest of any property line to any structure is three hundred and eighty-six feet, which is about a football field and eighty-six feet. Under the East Point zoning code, the most stringent buffer requirement, as many of you know, is seventy-five feet. So we exceed that significantly. And finally, as I mentioned, as far as the permitted uses, the first stated is community facilities. And if you ask anyone in the current community where the Atlanta Community Food Bank is located, they have been a terrific neighbor, and they are in fact a community facility. They have a number of features and amenities. In addition to obviously, the large portion of it that is in size, the warehouse space. But I wanted to make a couple of points to point out why this is not the same thing as your traditional business park warehouse. First off, twenty-five percent of the building is office space. Another nine percent of that is community engagement space. That results in thirty-five percent of this building being non-warehouse space. If you do a comparison with some of the properties in the business park, those percentages of office space, in addition to the warehouse space, range from one point eight percent to the highest at twenty-two percent. Additionally, and I think this is most telling, because when you're talking about zoning, you're talking about use of the land. How is it being used? What is this being used for? Only twenty-six percent of the employees, the one hundred and sixty-six employees, work in the warehouse area in some capacity. Approximately twenty of those, I think it's eighteen, are drivers. So if you subtracted the drivers and you just had traditional warehouse workers, you would have fourteen percent of the employees employed in that capacity. That leaves seventy-five percent of the employees engaged in outreach programs, management of the food bank, and other amenities that the food bank offers to combat poverty and hunger. Another significant distinction structurally from anything that would be located under the business park designation is that there are sixteen truck bays on the back of this building. And I believe there are approximately four in the front, and those are used for agency pickup. The food bank has, their programs are essentially driven by small agencies that collect the food from the food bank, and that is typically done with those agencies showing up in minivans, church buses, cars, and the occasional box truck in the front portion of the building. The back portion where you see the sixteen bays, a comparable building down on the other side of Camp Creek has sixty-four bays for trucks. The truck activity happens one time in the morning. The loading hours will be approximately from six to seven-thirty. They're hoping to cut that down. That's the current time. But with the amount of bays and the fact that they're not increasing their box truck fleet, they're expecting that to take about an hour in the morning. Once they leave, they either go locally if they're in a box truck, or they go to somewhere farther off regionally if they're in a tractor-trailer truck. The food bank currently has five tractor-trailers and between fourteen and seventeen box trucks. The expectation is at the ten-year mark that might increase to ten tractor-trailers and approximately twenty box trucks. There has also been some talk about traffic, and as some of you have seen in the application, we have provided a very in-depth traffic study that uses both the I T E manual and actual observations taken at the current food bank. The traffic department at the city of East Point recommended in favor of this project and signed off on it. Another significant difference is that these, the traffic ends fairly early in the evening at that facility. And the trip count is significantly less than any allowable, any trip count for any allowable use under the current zoning. I have the traffic engineer here, because I imagine there may be some questions for him, but we can get to that later if need be. Finally, I wanted to move on to the list of proposed conditions, because this is what was talked about extensively in the work session. We have agreed that the foot candle measurements from all lighting fixtures on the development won't exceed zero point zero at a distance of a hundred and twenty feet or greater from all existing residential property lines. I have the photometric plan, but some of you have seen it. I have something passed around that I handed to staff. Did you distribute that? The engineers have created a photometric plan that adheres to this condition, and that means that no light will leave that area. Here's a larger one, thank you. There won't be any future development outside of the eighteen acres already proposed in the site plan. The fleet of trucks will never exceed ten eighteen-wheel tractor-trailers and won't exceed twenty box trucks. The fleet of trucks will not operate between the hours of six P M. and six A M. There will be no onsite food pantry or soup kitchen located on the property. The property will be developed in accordance with the final site plan and the landscape plan documents as provided in the rezoning application. And there will be a fence surrounding the site, and I have provided also some images, as requested during the work session, of what kind of fence would go on the visible portion where you have the parking lot. The back portion will be surrounded by black vinyl fencing. And I think that there may have been, need to be some tweaks to that, and the engineers can speak to that, because the gate initially proposed is kind of in the right of way. And we're going to have the gate be blocking the driveway to the parking lot instead, and we can provide that. We have the engineers here for that as well. We will not at any time seek to support the reopening of Red Wine Road at Prince George. We won't at any point in time seek any access to the property via Queen Elizabeth. Trucks will not be permitted to idle when they are situated at the docks. The food bank will require, will provide documentation and reports from a third-party auditor for its food safety practices with respect to all pest prevention activities. The food bank agrees to purchase power from the city of East Point, notwithstanding its customer choice rights pursuant to OCGA forty-six dash three dash eight, meaning that regardless of any law that allows them to purchase power outside the city of East Point, they will purchase all of their power from the city of East Point, which will amount to hundreds of thousands of dollars a year because of the freezer capacity and the refrigeration capacity. And finally, the Atlanta Community Food Bank is amenable to dedicating a portion of any of the undisturbed area that you saw on that site plan to the city of East Point to construct a walking trail to be maintained and constructed by the city of East Point, should the city wish to do so. Now, I know some of you had some questions that were not necessarily off-topic in terms of zoning, but there were some questions about the selection process, and those were addressed in an email. But I have also brought Chris Eccles with me. He is the Vice President of CBRE, and that is the real estate firm that they employ to find this piece of property, and he can speak to that. And I also have Kyle Wade from the Atlanta Community Food Bank, and he can also talk to you about that process as well, because he has some tax credit information that, that is critical to site selection. I'm going to reserve some time for anyone who may want to speak in support, and also for any response to opposition.
Thank you, Lauren. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning application? Any other proponents? Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents here to speak against this zoning application? I think if you are here to speak against this zoning application, you should have turned your speaking card into staff. So staff, would you please sound the first three? And with the first one, please approach the podium, and the other two be on standby, just in the wings over here. To my left, your right.
Mrs. Saintville, Mrs. White, and Mrs. Huber.
And before you get started, I'm sorry, can we take the exhibits down from the applicant so that we can see the audience? Thank you. Good evening. State your first and last name, and your current address.
Good evening. My name is LaDondrea Saintville. I currently reside at twenty-nine ten Duke of Gloucester in the Williamsburg community. And I'm here today to oppose the recommendation for the food bank. I would say to you that as a young couple, my husband and I brought into the food bank, I mean, into the East Point community. The, the city council and the mayors presented the East Point community as a community that was up and coming. It was growing. When we moved here, there was nothing here. We've since gotten the east, the Camp Creek marketplace. We've since gotten the east, the Camp Creek marketplace. We're building that live-work area that we were touted, that was touted to us. We chose this community to grow our family. I am an attorney. My husband is an educator. Our communities are full of professionals. We have doctors, we have teachers, we have principals, we have all of those. We're all members of civic organizations, fraternities, sororities, churches, and when we choose to serve, we go out with our organizations and we serve, but we come home to the quiet enjoyment of our neighborhoods. And that's what East Point sold us, an opportunity to grow our families, a safe place that was going to be up and coming. The comprehensive plan identifies that. It's what it sets out for us, and we bought into that comprehensive plan. It's identified what they want for East Point. They want to attract young families, first-time homeowners, to the city in order to build a stable, diversified community. That's what East Point is about. They want to attract young professionals such as myself. That's how you're building up downtown area, the Jefferson Park area, and everyone is buying into that, investing into, you know, the shops, the restaurants, and everything that comes with that. And you want to create a business climate that supports the existing businesses. And I will implore to you that, you know, a food bank stigmatizes a neighborhood. No matter what you say, the current location is in no way comprehensive or comparable to what East Point is growing into. Our vision for East Point is so much greater than a food bank. We don't need that. We're asking the, the planning commission to expand and broaden your, your, your vision for us, to buy those sixty-four acres. There's no need for us to leave that in the care and control of other people. We can get behind that. We absolutely support you purchasing that for the residents. And we're asking that you protect East Point. Camp Creek marketplace has been identified in the comprehensive plan as a congested area. We live there. No matter what the traffic study says, we have firsthand knowledge that there is congestion there during the peak hours. There is no room for a community food bank, box trucks. That's going to disrupt our quiet enjoyment, and I can assure you, those are just potential liabilities for the future because you have ensured us that we will continue to enjoy that. That's a public good, the road that runs through there, and we're not experiencing any traffic. We're not dealing with any of the deficits that come with the food bank. So we're asking that you continue the great vision that has been identified for the Camp Creek marketplace, for the rest of the City of East Point through the comprehensive plan, that you attract young families. And I can assure you, they will, they will not come to an area, young professionals, where there is a food bank. It's not an area for us. It's not where we feel safe. You know, the, the tax burden, the community that they're serving is not what we want around our young children, and it's not what we want to deal with when we come home from our jobs and our workplaces, to enjoy the quiet use of our property. And please, we ask that you not allow this encroachment, that you protect our rights as citizens, and that you grow our community by purchasing those sixty-four acres of land and giving us an opportunity to support you as taxpayers in continuing this great vision through the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saintville. Our next speaker?
I'm Dr. Maribor White. I live at thirty-four-twenty-four Prince George Street, and I'm just the opposite. I'm at the retirement age, and Prince George was a nice, quiet area. Marketplace is a great amenity for East Point, but it has also attracted a lot of traffic. And I have to pick my times to leave my neighborhood because of the traffic. Now, if you could imagine that with just Marketplace, add tractor-trailers, sixteen bays, trucks, five tractor-trailers, ten whatever, whatever, on top of the traffic at Marketplace, then you can feel my pain. I have grandchildren that chose to move on Prince George with us down the street. They are young children. The traffic is horrendous on Prince George because of the cut-through, and I'm sure as soon as these trucks find out they can cut through, they'll be cutting through also. Please consider our peace at, over on that side of town. We're having problems with the traffic, with the air traffic, and now you're going to give us a food bank. Please think about our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Before you get started, staff, would you please call the next three speakers so that they are ready? And if you would come forward and be ready to speak after this speaker?
Mr. White, Mr. Austin, and Mr. Giles.
Okay. You may go ahead and state your first and last name and your current address.
Okay. Well, first I want to say good evening, commissioners, and thank you and your staff for your service. I'm Vicki Huber, and my family lives at thirty-four-thirty-seven Prince George Street. Our home is closest to the structure and also closest to the truck court. It is not a football field to the corner of the truck court. They raised the balloon to mark that spot, and it was clearly visible from my kitchen window. And the idea of the sixteen box trucks and tractor-trailers is just kind of unbelievable that they would be starting up at six to six-thirty in the morning and the sound reverberating off of the smooth surfaces of the truck court and the sides of the warehouse. And on my street, all of the owners who live in the homes next to the proposed site oppose it. And you may see their signatures. I believe you all got a folder from our neighborhood organization with the petition that they signed. I am an officer of WADA, our neighborhood association, which does not support this project. Everyone in this room should know that the staff of East Point Planning and Zone, East Point Planning and Community Development recommends the denial of this rezoning request, stating that the proposed use is not consistent with East Point's comprehensive plan update of two thousand and seventeen, nor with the purpose and intent of the CUP, a community unit plan. The current location of the food bank in Atlanta is zoned light industrial. Here, they seek rezoning of the property to the CUP. Under East Point CUP zoning, warehousing and storage functions are not permitted, but community facilities are. The food bank is attempting to rebrand itself as a community service facility so that it may come under the CUP designation. At best, this is disingenuous, and at worst, it's deceptive. I have here sight maps of the project. One is from December of last year, the other's from February of this year. They are both titled Warehouse, Proposed Warehouse Tracks. And then they've labeled their latest map that I had, February, March, I believe, the community service facility. But according to the East, again, referred to the East Point staff analysis of the site plan, roughly seventy-five percent of the total square footage of the structure will be utilized as warehousing and storage. This is just simply not allowed under the East Point CUP zoning. Furthermore, the staff analysis says the proposed use does not fit the definition and intent of a community facility. The food bank services twenty-nine counties across metro Atlanta and North Georgia, with plans to expand, expand their services to probably that many on the south side. The food bank's mission, scope, and regional scale is not compatible with the intent of neighborhood-serving use as permitted in the CUP district. Yesterday, I spoke with my neighbor and the former mayor of, of East Point, Pat C. Joe Hillier. She is against the project. She asked, why should we have to settle for something we know is not complimentary to our community? She believes Williamsburg and East Point can and should do better, and that this is an opportunity to go out and seek what we want and what is best for East Point. Our Williamsburg neighborhood asks that you not put our community in jeopardy by recommending the zoning change for this warehouse project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huber. We have our next speaker. Is it Mr. White?
Good evening. My name is Ricky White, and I presently live at thirty-four-twenty-four Prince George Street. And I totally oppose this project simply because, and I'm just going to add on to what Vicki was saying, we don't, we don't want to beat this all night, but what I'm saying, what I do want to say is that it will impede our property value, no doubt in my, my mind. The Atlanta Community Food Bank, and I've just been bothered with this for the last several days, why on earth would Atlanta Community Food Bank move to this particular spot? Why is that? How did that happen? Who said what in order for that to be in that position? I would like to know that. We've got an area just on the other side of two-eighty-five across from us, the Camp Creek marketplace. We have an industrial area over there. Now, this seemed to me like it would fit perfectly in that industrial area, but from where is, where they're asking for this to go now, if you're from East Point and you live in our community, you know in that particular area, we got a renovation on a hotel coming up. We got a storage, a rental, a, a storage facility, and these are just, just numbers as far as we've got a, we've got a business, we've got an office park or whatever, thinking four to five hundred, five thousand square feet, maybe four suites. And that's it. And this property that we're talking about here now, I live on Prince George, now it's in Vicki's back door, but it's at my mail, it's at my mailbox. They're saying, okay, the lighting wouldn't affect us, the noise wouldn't affect us. Of course it will. And over time, from what I heard, there's going to be additional tractor-trailers over ten years from what I thought I just heard, maybe less. We don't need this. We don't need this. I've been in these, my wife and I, we moved to East Point twenty years ago because we deemed East Point to be the best neighborhood for my family at the time. We did that. And we've been all-in with East Point. We want East Point to grow. We want East Point to do great things. Of course, we have problems. We're going to always have problems, but this one, we don't need. This will not increase the value of my property or our property or, or even that with East Point. Atlanta Community Food Bank. Just think of, just Atlanta Community Food Bank in East Point, serving the metro area. Out of that one little spot on that hill, if you know what I'm talking about, if you know the area, you know exactly what I'm talking about. That's, that's, that one little area, and we got this, this big, total industrial park on the other side of two-eighty-five, just, just on the other side of the interstate. Why was that chosen? Why was that particular spot chosen? Who did that? Who did that? We're concerned with our property value, and I'm going to sit down. We're concerned with our property value. Like I said, we do have problems in the area. Williamsburg is supposed to be the lead community in East Point. It is the lead community. Everything that goes on in East Point goes through Williamsburg because we are caring people in our community, and we will stand up and fight for our community. We do not want this. This will not help us in any way. No way whatsoever. Please consider that when you, when it comes to this rezoning. It's just not for us to put this huge three or four football field on, a better field, a, a building in our, in our community, right there in that one little spot when we got that industrial area over there. We don't need it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. White. Our next speaker is Mr. Austin.
Good evening. I'm Lance Austin, live at thirty-four-ninety-nine Prince George Street in East Point. As all my neighbors have said, you know, this doesn't add value to our properties. When I look at East Point, we have five-hundred-and-thirty-eight square foot of distribution center space on Lawrence Ave., available right now, which is more than the food bank needs. It's already nested in the network. As my other neighbor said, Vicki said, they're currently zoned light industrial, so now they choose East Point to change their business plan, their business model. Now, let's be clear, I'm a regional manager. My region goes from New Mexico to Maryland. The Atlanta Community Food Bank region covers all of Georgia. Today, Williamsburg is, are your executive homes in East Point. There's been a lot of talk about Jefferson Park. We have the highest property values. We have the most to lose. When you look out there, our houses sell basically within ten days, and recently, we had one go into contract in three. I invite you to come out and take a look. With fifteen to twenty percent year-over-year growth in the real estate market within the tri-cities of College Park, East Point, and Hapeville, we do not want to retrograde that because I can tell you that when you start to do appraisals and buyers start to buy, they will base it off of Williamsburg and everything else in this city will tumble. Desert Drive, I've talked to the director of sales for that hotel. It will be a Sheridan Four Points by Marriott. They are investing twenty million dollars in that corridor to produce minimally six million dollars. They will employ eighty members of the East Point community, part-time and full-time. That is not in accounting for their food and beverage operations as well. She will be targeting not only national, but not only local, but national customers. Trucks running through that corridor, she said to me, the road is too narrow. Trucks running through that corridor did not hold well for a twenty-million-dollar renovation. Cactus Car Wash has already started to impact them. I can talk to you a lot about cannibalization. We can cannibalize that twenty-million-dollar investment. We can cannibalize the executive homes in this community, but I can tell you that no other development will come here once we demonstrate that. When I look around at sixty-two acres, and I just try to say, what can it be used for? Atlanta Braves Stadium sits on fifty-seven-point-one acres. The Chick-fil-A headquarters sits on eighty acres. The State Farm Building, which they leased that land, one billion dollars in investment, seventeen acres. There's a lot we can do in that corridor. This isn't it. As you've heard, and you will continue to hear, the Williamsburg community is passionate about our homes. We're passionate about our brand, and we got a little bit of homework to do after this because I continue to say to my neighbors, even if we get past this, we got some work to do. We're also passionate about development in that area. Several other neighbors and I have talked, and we would like to approach a mixed-use development down there, similar to College Park Airport City, with the assemblage of land there and across Camp Creek for consideration. And we're serious about our politics. We're here. We want things done right in East Point. We want to be here. If you run us away, then you're taking a gamble on what will come. This doesn't work for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Mr. Giles? And staff, would you please go ahead and sound the other speaker cards so that those speakers are prepared to speak after Mr. Giles?
Mr. Winter, Mr. Brown, and Ms. Chapman.
My name is Brian. My name is Brian Giles. My family resides at twenty-eight-ten Duke of Gloucester, East Point, Georgia. As referenced in the twenty-seventeen comprehensive plan, East Point has limited natural resources, meaning natural waterways and trees and tree canopy. This proposed site will have an industrial footprint about the size of six football fields that will destroy and minimize the natural barrier that lies between two-eighty-five and my neighborhood, Williamsburg Community. The trees there serve as a natural buffer against noise and air pollution caused by the air, caused by the traffic on two-eighty-five. I know the food bank said that they're going to preserve and sort of cut off and preserve some trees, but why even start the process of cutting and, and cutting those trees and increasing the industrials, increasing that industrial footprint? There is also a stream that literally flows through my backyard, and it is a tributary of Camp Creek waterway and eventually feeds into the Chattahoochee River. That stream, that, that, the proposed site sits on an A, I believe it's a fifty-year and a hundred-year floodplain, which can, which contains part of that waterway that flows through my backyard. My concern is that the development of an industrial, on an industrial scale in this particular area will increase land erosion and stormwater runoff. And if the city does not have the time or resources to adequately monitor erosion and stormwater, and stormwater, then those issues in that area will, will exacerbate and cause future problems such as flooding, mold- such as flooding, mold, and decrease property value, and decrease the property value in the Williamsburg area. I encourage the rezoning, I encourage the planning committee to keep in the back of their mind the intended purpose of that tract, which is really to facilitate a natural or, or a nature walkway or park to preserve the green space and natural buffers. Uh, similar to what we have in, um, on the Cascade preserves or on the north side of the Dunwoody Nature Center. Even if the zoning committee were to consider, uh, uh, developing that area and not using it as a nature preserve, I would like to see something more of at least an upscale hotel or something that would generate revenue coming down that Camp Creek Parkway, such that it would generate more revenue and a tax base for East Point. And just basic on, on principles of equity and fairness, you know, the, the zoning committee and our elected officials are the gatekeepers of our community. And at some point, if you guys approve this rezoning and this land sale goes through, then East Point will, will have to transfer, um, property rights or that North Desert Drive, that public easement, public right-of-way on North Desert Drive to the food bank so they can use it. In the end, the food bank wants to expand their business while East Point, while East Point's residents and taxpayers are left holding the bag full of expenses and unwanted side effects. I hope this is not the direction that East, that the city of East Point is going. You are the gatekeepers. Protect our community. Protect our way of life. Protect the Williamsburg community. I ask that you bend an ear toward the residents of East Point and the taxpayers as opposed to bending to the will of the Atlanta Community Food Bank. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giles. Our next speaker is Mr. White. Is that correct? Is that, Mr. White? Mr. Gunter? Okay. Sir, Mr. Gunter? Mr. Brown?
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Threek Brown. I reside at thirty-sixty Duke of Gloucester here in East Point. I'm just here to, uh, support my neighbors. I'm the vice president of our Neighborhood Association. Uh, we went through the process, we took a vote, we had the presentation by the Food Bank Association, and we talked among ourselves, is this a good fit to affect this community? And I'm supporting whatever they have said tonight, it is true. We've looked at this long and hard, that dead-end street for this type of development is not good, for East Point is not good, uh, for the Williamsburgs community. East Point was clearly designed, I was on council when we did the Camp Creek Marketplace and the industrial park by Duke Fleets across the street. And over there, you got, uh, two-way in, two ways out for tractor trailers to go in and out. Can you imagine coming down Desert Drive, getting at that light, and trying to make a right turn to get back to two eighty-five? I just can't see a fifty-three footer doing that. So it would be a mess. And when the food bank building a facility like this, once it's there, the growth mode can really take off. We don't control that. We can't legislate that. But when you look at a dead-end street for a development of this nature, if you've driven out there, it's just not a good fit. Again, I think my, my residents have nothing against the food bank, we're just looking at reality and what this is. Because one thing that the food bank can grow, but one thing about Williamsburg and our community, it will stay the same. So when you bring on more, there would be a negative to it, it's already been said, the property value certainly will be affected. So we had the game plan to have a development, uh, uh, park, all the way down Welcome All Road. You got tractor trailers down there, it's, it's designed for that, and it's a good fit, it's working great. Traffic can get off two eighty-five and go all the way to Fulton Industrial, a good fit. Uh, money is being made over there. So, but again, to come in that dead-end area, to put a three hundred thousand-plus square foot warehouse is just not good for the city of East Point, not good for the residential community here, and enough is enough. If you go down eighty-five south to Flatshoes Road, you can just see warehouses against residential areas. And we don't want this to happen. This is what happened on our side of town, this is what happened to our communities, and we just don't want this impact here. Not against residents, so when we have an industrial park for it to go into. And I just ask you all to deny this rezoning because it would be in the best interest of the city of East Point and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there a Ms. Chapman?
Hello, thank you. Uh, my name is Keisha Chapman. I reside at thirty-four hundred Prince George Street. Um, I'm coming here definitely to support my neighbors in opposing, um, the food bank to come here. I recently purchased my house in October two thousand seventeen in East Point. Um, and since then, I've lived in Brooklyn, New York, Baltimore, Maryland, um, Texas, and I've lived in so many different cities. And I've seen the impact of a establishment like this coming into a neighborhood. Um, I was very proud of the representation in Williamsburg when I moved here. To see the community and the quality of residents come forth and, and speak and support, um, each other. And I am concerned, I'm a young professional, um, and, you know, I have friends looking at real estate, and East Point already has a really, you know, bad name and stigma, and there's crime and things that are going on in this area. Um, but I also see the beauty in the community and its people. And with people like me coming in and taking on and moving forward the legacy that we have here, I do believe this is an unstoppable place that can definitely, you know, show financially grow, um, bring more attractive, um, people to come in and, and with, you know, better incomes and things like that. Um, and so I really just wanted to, to call your attention to that and ask that you deny it. I've had a look at the marketplace, it's full of nail salons, and at one point in time, I did my research, and I heard that there was a Barnes and Nobles there. That's a really good thing, like a bookstore. So I think that if we can have something that is, like, something along the lines of a park. Uh, my mother lives in Baltimore, Maryland, and there's Lake Montebello, people go out there and exercise. And I think some of that could help with the crime in, in the area and continue to add value to our neighborhoods. And so I don't want to keep you long, but I do also, um, have a note here that the residents of Grant Estates Neighborhood, um, they are in support of this, and I just ask that, um, you guys take, you take everything that has been said here into consideration, not just for a short-term vision, but for a long-term vision for the city of East Point. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. Are there any other speakers?
We have one more speaker, Mr. Bracy.
Mr. Bracy.
Good evening, I'm Steve Bracy, thirty-four seventy-five Prince George Street. Uh, my property is probably one of the closest to the parking lot of this projected project. And, uh, as we were, as they mentioned, there's thirty-five percent of that property is slated to be community, the, community development. And I look at, if you take sixty-five percent of that, that represents over two hundred thousand square feet of industrial space. And I think having that industrial space in our community would really take away from our quiet enjoyment of what we consider just peaceful and quiet of our neighborhood. Um, our residents have been galvanized to really look at what the future of East Point and the future of our Williamsburg neighborhood can really, you know, how it can really be developed. I also have a stormwater issue that comes down the side of my house. And I, my concern is, although they have a, a great theoretical plan of how to divert some stormwater issues, my concern is that some of that, some of those issues will trickle down to my property, which will create greater issues. And I think giving up the public good of Desert Drive, uh, with nothing in return represents a liability that the city may be responsible for in perpetuity, for whatever responsibility or whatever issues can come about by having this project in place. I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bracy. Are there any other opponents to speak against this zoning item? Any other opponents? Okay, seeing none, at this time, the applicant has a right to rebut. So I'll ask if the applicant, if, if the Atlanta Community Food Bank's representative, um, would like to rebut.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I can't, hold on just one second, please.
Mr. Chair, the time was extended by seventeen minutes, so that gives, um, the applicant twenty-one minutes and thirteen seconds. Um, that includes the four minutes that they had in their initial meeting.
Please do not exceed your twenty-one minutes and thirteen seconds.
Thank you.
I will turn your mic off.
Understood. Just wanted to go through sort of piecemeal the different assertions made in terms of the effect of the quality of life on the residents of Williamsburg. I think, um, when most of you saw that, that landscape site plan, you saw the, the undisturbed portions of land is somewhat unprecedented for any kind of development, particularly a profit-driven one. Um, developers monetize things, they look at things dollars per square foot. Under the C-two and CL zoning classifications, as you know, there are, uh, myriad uses that could go there tomorrow without a rezoning request with simply permit applications and no community input. And rest assured that they would use those buffers, uh, right to the very edge, that they would be able to use them so that they could maximize their dollars. But speaking of that, we can talk about traffic because obviously that came up, and I didn't mention it, but I do have some pretty significant numbers to demonstrate the distinctions in the traffic impact of this site versus anything that could go there tomorrow with a simple permitting application. Just excuse me for one second. There's been some talk, and so we had the traffic engineer take a look at hotels because there seems to be a lot of enthusiasm, uh, kind of in the ether about folks getting a hotel here. So if you look at that property on the other side of Camp Creek where there's the two hotels, that's approximately forty acres, a little bit less. This is sixty-four acres, again, maximizing profit, you probably have more than two hotels there. But let's just say for the sake of argument, there were two hotels there. You're looking at a daily trip count of two thousand nine hundred and sixty cars. In the AM peak hour, that's a hundred and forty-five. In the PM peak hour, that's a hundred and ninety-nine. The current existing Atlanta Community Food Bank site has a total trip count of four hundred and ninety-four vehicles. In the AM peak hour, that's fifty-six vehicles. In the PM peak hour, that's thirty-eight. And on the projected growth scale, as we discussed in the conditions with the increase in the truck fleet to ten tractor trailers and the increase in the box trucks to twenty, as well as an estimated increase in the employment of the employees, about fifty to sixty percent, so their cars coming in and out. The projected estimate for that is seven hundred and ninety vehicles per day. Ninety at AM peak hour, sixty-one at PM peak hour. There's been talk about mixed-use developments. A hundred and sixty-three thousand square foot mixed-use development, and again, the traffic engineer is here in case anyone has any further questions. But when he uses the I T E manual, he did some very conservative estimates. So this is not maximizing the sixty-four acres with that hundred and sixty-three thousand, you probably would see something more significant. That would be a daily trip count of five thousand eight hundred and eighty-two vehicles. Two hundred and ninety-eight during the AM peak hour and five hundred and forty during the PM peak hour. General office space of eighty-eight thousand square feet, which is the size of our office space, and just give me one moment. See that? That box right here? That's eighty-eight thousand square feet on sixty-four acres. So obviously, if someone wanted to build an office development, it'd probably be significantly larger than that. But using that estimate of eighty-eight thousand square feet, your general office complex and the International Traffic Engineer's Manual will be nine hundred and thirty-eight trip counts. That's still, uh, significantly more than even the future projected growth at the food bank. And obviously, like I said, it would be a much larger office development. Two hundred residential units. One thousand four hundred and seventy-one vehicles daily. A seventy-five thousand square foot shopping center, again, much smaller than the site. Four thousand nine hundred and forty-four vehicles daily. And again, just to point out, you do see the green space preserved. That would not happen in a commercial development, and those buffers would be fifty feet. We also did a noise study. The noise engineer went out and he did a twofold study. What he did was he measured the ambient noise at the current food bank, which is obviously, because it's at a high-traffic corner, that's going to be a higher ambient noise than the background in a tranquil backyard in Williamsburg. So what he did was he went to a tranquil backyard in Williamsburg. And he studied the noise levels at the existing food bank at very close distances. And he studied the current noise levels in the Williamsburg community, which predominantly consists of, of course, airplane traffic and, believe it or not, birds, or the second loudest noise. What he made in his determination was that the loudest sound that folks might hear from the Atlanta Community Food Bank are those brake releases on the trucks happening during that morning, and then the afternoon return when they come back at three or four in the afternoon. He also indicated that the only sounds that are expected to exceed the sixty d B A daytime threshold prior to nine AM are attributed to those parking brakes. And that because the facility operates primarily during the day, and that the site is continually exposed to the air traffic, the worst-case predicted noise levels should rarely exceed sixty d B A for a few seconds per occurrence, that's that brake release noise. And it's his opinion that this facility will be fully in compliance with the city of East Point code of ordinances and probably then some in terms of the, the sounds emanating from the site, particularly because of those once-daily visits in the morning from the tractor trailers. We did do a balloon study, and, um, we, we hired a balloon engineer. And what that is, is that they hang a big red balloon at the height of the building and also at the height of where the parking lot's going to be. Let me see if this is my distances here. And Ms. Huber was correct, she is not, uh, three hundred and eighty-six linear feet from the back of the truck turnaround. She is two hundred and ninety-four linear feet, so, um, a few feet less than a football field. I think that, um, the balloon study, when it was conducted, it wasn't quite spring. Um, there were some leaves growing back, but that has been provided in the packet, and you can see the photographs for yourself. And he did a, a three-level zoom on those, and so, um, you can kind of see with your own eyes what you would actually be seeing, what the visual impact would be. And again, of course, this buffer is dramatically larger than any other building that could go there right now. We talked about taxes and property values. The community submitted a study that I had actually discovered myself too from a Georgia State University professor about the impact on property values for residential properties. And he divided it into three categories, and of course, the contention is that this is an industrial use. Again, the numbers I gave you were staggeringly less than any possible industrial use. This is not an industrial use, especially in terms of the percentage of activity. Um, we have community spaces where events go on, we have symposiums, we have cooking kitchens. We have twenty-three million pounds of food that doesn't touch the facility, that gets facilitated through the office work of the employees and staff who work there. But for the sake of argument, the conclusion of that professor's study that was included in the opposition's paperwork said that the, the most surprising aspect of his study was the lack of evidence for negative and significant impacts of commercial real estate development on residential property values. Volumes of political arguments to the contrary are voiced at local planning debates across the nation, yet this study does not provide substantive evidence of negative interaction. He also, um, states that in, uh, industrial developments, which again, apples and oranges, coincide with a pre-existing downward trend in local housing values, and yet the completion of industrial development actually ends up not having a significant impact on that trend at the point-seven-five mile radius from the site. Again, and a lot of those conditions that were read out express concern. Again, and a lot of those conditions that were read out express concern for the various issues that come with a development coming to a neighborhood that was largely unaffected by any development for so many years because that property has been vacant. The property owner is ready to sell that property, and if he does not sell it to the Atlanta Community Food Bank, he will sell it to a commercial developer. He will not have to go through the rezoning process. I understand folks' concerns, but I think that, on the other hand, there may be a bit of a lack of understanding about the kinds of things that can go into that site and the kinds of impacts it would have on their quality of life. In terms of smell and rodent prevention, I think that we discussed that there would be, there's already audits conducted by a third party that's required because this is a food bank and because they distribute food to impoverished communities. They are held to a higher standard than the City of East Point ordinances, and those will be provided as pursuant to their zoning conditions. Does you have anything to add, Mr. Dingle?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Larry Dingle, 2849, Paces Ferry Road. And very quickly, I'll go through some of the comments that the opponents to this proposed project raised, or some of the issues they raised. And I'll try to be as brief as I can. One is the Atlanta Community Food Bank creates a stigma. Nothing could be further from the truth. And we have constantly, with unspent clarity, asked each and every member of this community to go visit the existing Atlanta Community Food Bank. We've asked that time without number. Okay? If you do, you will not find crime, you will not find blight, you will not find anything unkept about that facility. Those are the things that bring down property value. To be realistic, property values don't decrease because of a specific use. It's the negative external impacts of that property owner not maintaining his or her or its property that damages the neighbor. Now, I've been doing this a fairly long time. My burden to my neighbor is not to increase my neighbor's property. My responsibility to my neighbor is not to damage my neighbor's property, not to devalue it. And we have done everything within our power to do that. If an issue was raised about noise, what do we do? We get a noise study. If an issue is raised about traffic, what do we do? We get a traffic study. Now, the staff here has looked at that. We heard that from Mr. Brown, Mr. Threed Brown. First thing we did is we collected ourselves and met with the CID, met with the staff of the City of East Point and the Georgia Department of Transportation, identified every choke point that could be impacted by this proposed development. Mr. Brown spoke about the right turns coming out of North Desert Drive. Well, the City of East Point is planning to extend North Desert Drive and Ale Circle, and that issue will be cured. There was an issue raised about traffic in our own traffic study about the intersection of North Commerce Drive and Redwine Road, and our study showed that that was a choke point. But when we met with the respective individuals, they were able to show us a commitment and an allocation of funds from the City of East Point to signalize Redwine Road and North Commerce Drive, which eliminates that problem. I think that one of the things that is always a difficulty is fear, fear of change. And I've managed that for the last forty-five years of my career. And we are very sensitive to the neighbors. No, we didn't come in and try to roll over anybody. Every single thing that has been raised as an issue, we've tried our best to address it, and we believe we have done a competent job of that. What we cannot guarantee, though, is that where there's property that you do not own, that you have the ability to control it. There's a process that we're going through right now that allows us to really think through how we allocate the responsibilities of property owner and neighbor. And we have done a legitimate job, we believe, of attempting to accomplish that. When Lauren talks about the alternate uses, it's not a threat. It's simply going through the existing ordinances of the City of Atlanta, the City of East Point, for that property that is zone C-2 and CL. The property nearest these neighbors is CL. And the types of things you can do there, create a minimum separation from the buildings that can go there to the property line of folks, that's only forty feet. That's all that is required by the code. It requires no more than that. And that doesn't require rezoning or anything else. So the fact that you can see a building, that the structure of that building that's three hundred and eighty-six feet away, I think I understand that, but it would seem to me also to be a concern about what the alternative is. And there's no debate about that. I mean, the codes are there. Our site plan is there. We are agreeing to make that site plan a condition of zoning. One of the things that we did is we had great debate before we ever filed our zoning application. We met with the planning staff, we met with the attorneys, to try to figure out how do we go about doing this in a way that will allow us to reach consensus. Now, we weren't able to agree on some things, but we did our best to try to get there. It's not for a want of trying. And what we really settled on is when you look at the CUP, under the existing zoning orders in the City of East Point, it allows for a community-based facility. Now, what does that mean? It is not a term of art, and it certainly isn't defined in the City of East Point's code. And I think that the staff did a job of looking out at the zoning dictionary. The best thing the zoning dictionary could do is tell us what other cities thought would be the appropriate definition of what a community food bank is or what a community facility is. To my way of thinking, I truly believe, and I'll believe it till I die, that this is a community facility that serves a specific purpose for the folks, the least of God's children, and communities to be able to enjoy the benefit of a decent meal. And I don't know what's wrong with that. Now, this is going to be a fifteen-million-dollar facility, spanking brand-new. We're not talking about building a ghetto. We're not talking about tearing down Paradise and building a parking lot. Okay? We're trying to do a really credible job. And so we've said, "Don't trust us if we tell you that it's going to be landscaped a certain way." We aren't asking for your trust. We're saying we're willing to condition to that landscape plan so it looks like that. If you raise a question, Mr. Chairman, about fencing, we hear you. We respond to that. If someone is concerned about the infusion of light, we do a light study to demonstrate where the light's going to end. That's really the best we can do, and we're willing to condition our plan to that. If we say we're only going to use eighteen acres, and after that, twelve acres is reforested, we don't intend to use the rest of it, and a part of the comprehensive development plan really focuses on preserving natural assets, we think we are doing that. With regard to floodplain, we're not in the floodplain. There's some floodplain to the north of our property, but there's absolutely nothing that we're doing in the floodplain that would damage the riprarian interest of the City of East Point. Nothing. In addition to that, we made it absolutely clear that we were not going to seek in any way a reduction in the required buffer into the riprarian rights, in the riprarian interest of the City of East Point, that seventy-five-foot buffer, to ask for anything. We have treated this with a maximum amount of dignity, the best that we can. I mean, we've done the best we can in working with the neighbors, and sometimes we can agree, and sometimes we can't agree. But we believe in this particular instance, that this particular proposed use is a right use for this land at this location. Any additional use, when you start talking about removal of trees, I don't think you'll ever find another development unless it is a park. Okay? That will preserve as much green space and provide the kinds of buffers that this proposed plan provides. With that, I'll conclude. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dingle. Anyone else from the applicant as a part of the rebuttal? How many minutes does the applicant have?
That's fine. I just wanted to briefly add that it's not often that we have this many of our experts in the room, but we do tonight. And so if there are any questions for some of the issues that were raised, such as water, we have the engineer here who designed the site for traffic. We have the traffic engineer here. And we also, like I said earlier, we have Mr. Chris Echols from CBRE and the CEO from the food bank, who can both address the site selection issue and the tax issues that go along with that. And so with that being said, if there are any questions that those people can address, they're all here right now, and that's not frequent, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. If you would, please, before you step away, remove your visual so that that's out of the audience can see the commission. Thank you. Okay. At this time, commissioners are entertaining a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, second by Commissioner Tucker, that we close the public hearing for case number 2018-Z as in zebra dash zero-zero-six dash zero-four and 2018-V as in Victor, C as in Charles, dash zero-zero-eight dash zero-four. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Here, none of the ayes have of the public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Case number 2018-Z dash zero-zero-six dash zero-four and case number 2018-VC dash zero-zero-eight dash zero-four. The applicant is Atlanta Community Food Bank. The location is zero Redwine Road. Staff recommends denial of rezoning the properties from C-2C Central Business District with conditions and CL Commercial Limited to CUP Community Unit Plan. The proposed use is not consistent with the City of East Point Comprehensive Plan Update 2017 nor the purpose and intent of the CUP zoning district.
Okay. Thank you.
Staff also recommends withdrawal of the concurrent variance to reduce the number of required parking spaces. The site plan submitted sheet Z-1 dated March 7th, 2018 indicates the proposed use will meet the parking requirements established in Chapter 2, Article E, Section 10 dash 2154.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, we've heard from the applicant, we've heard from also the community, so we've heard both proponents and opponents. We've also heard staff's recommendation. At this time, I entertain a motion. Let us not all speak at once.
Motion to open the floor to questions?
I think that we've got to have a motion for...
Let me, I'll do it.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll do it, I'll do it, I'll do it, I'll do it. Motion for denial of rezoning. And also, will I need to do the withdrawal for the variance?
Yes.
For discussion.
Okay.
For discussion.
So Commissioner Fan is recommending a motion to denial for the rezoning from C-dash-2C Central Business District with conditions and CL Commercial Limited to CUP Community Unit Plan, and also is recommending approval of the withdrawal of the variance for parking.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, second by Commissioner Tucker. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
I made that motion for discussion. I do have some discussion. I've heard, I've heard from the applicant, I've heard from the residents. And I, too, have, when I came here, I had mixed emotions and feelings about, and I'm a very honest person, I don't BS people. I had concerns whether I was going to vote for it or vote against it. And I said earlier, in a jovial way, "We just recommend, we don't make any decisions. We do not buy land, we do not, from a planted zone, we don't have the thought to do that. That's done through the council." But I do have concerns, I do have concerns. I heard what Mr. Dingle said, I heard what the others said. But I really, I have a question in terms of the trucks, the amount of trucks, all day long, in and out of the condition of six to six PM to six AM, nothing's going to happen anyway, you're closed. That's really not a real sincere condition, because they're going to be closed anyway. The other thing that I have a concern about is the trucks. It really is the trucks. It is the car wash that's going there, it's the hotel that's going there, it's the restaurant that's going there, it's the apartments that's up and down Redwine already. And just the other day, I had an opportunity to come up North Desert Drive, or come up Desert Drive, coming from Lowe's, and by BJ's, and there was a tractor and trailer coming up the road there and trying to turn on Redwine. He was stuck. He couldn't figure out which way to go. And he took that right going down Redwine, and he just held up traffic, trying to get down Redwine, because that's the only way you can get back out, coming down Redwine to come back around and do it in a timely manner, because you've got all those apartments over there, everybody over there now, cars, cars everywhere, trying to come down that road. Can't get them down Camp Creek, because it's already crowded. So that has been a way that people can leave the marketplace reasonably, you know, in a decent time and decent way. But that truck, that truck got me, that tractor eighteen-wheeler got me that day, because he was going down Redwine, and when he got to the proposed site, he had to turn right. And when he turned right, he didn't know what to do. He just stopped there, and traffic was stuck right there waiting on him to try to figure out what he was going to do. Eventually, he drove around, and he got down. He couldn't go back to the right, as Threed Brown said, because you can't make that right back around. So he eventually went past the parking lot where the cars are down there and got back down, and then he figured he had to go left, because he couldn't turn right there. So I mean, so when you talk about the amount of trucks that's in and out of there, that's, and I know that there's a proposal, I know they're saying there's a proposal to eliminate that, but when we talk about what is to be and what is, that's a problem, because it's a problem. And I just have to be very clear from the very beginning, I was concerned about traffic even during the Camp Creek phase. I was on P and Z then, I was concerned about it then, Larry, I was concerned about it then. You know, I raised that at this and then, the truck traffic, the truck traffic and the car traffic. And it's just getting crazy out there. And I just see this bringing in more traffic, you've got more people living over there now. We approved all of these apartments down through there, and then Atlanta started approving apartments on the other side, and we've got all of this traffic coming this way. So I just, I feel some kind of way about it. I just don't think that it's a good fit. I don't know what can be there in the future. I don't know that and what people may be proposing to bring. You can come on back up, Larry, you know, you can come on back up, because you know, me and you going to dance anyway. But the reality of it is, is I just don't feel it is a good fit for that community. And I know Williamsburg, and I know Prince George, and I know Duke of Claus, I know that community over there, those people care about their houses, they care about... And then we're talking about traffic cutting through, that's why we closed down Redwine in the first place. People complained about the traffic going through there. I mean, so now we have a potential revisiting of the past and them cutting through back through neighborhoods, because people going to find the quickest way to get out. They are, they're going to find a quicker way to get out. So I want you to address me, Larry. Please address me, because you know I know you come.
Yes. Well...
Just one second, please. So I will allow you to address Commissioner Fan's concerns. However, we have a technical issue that we need to address, and this will be the perfect time for smooth editing. We're running out of tape, and so we need for our camera guy to change the tape. We've run out of battery.
Ran out of battery?
I guess, to the applicant, and that is why I said that Mr. Dingle could come and respond to the commissioner's concern. So the public hearing is closed? I'm sorry, can you remove that, because I was speaking to those people?
I apologize.
Thank you. So I then allowed Mr. Dingle to respond to the commissioner's concern, but the public hearing is closed, and so I just want you to understand that, okay?
Thank you. Larry, can you move that over here so it won't be blocking them? Thank you. Because it's going to be you and I talking anyway, so bring it over here.
And, Mr. Chair, just as a point of clarification, I mean, this opportunity that's being given to the applicant is confined to responding to the concerns raised by Commissioner Fan, not an opportunity to present additional material, not responsive. It may be helpful if Commissioner Fan could just sort of highlight again what his concerns were.
My concern is the traffic. My concern is specifically the amount of traffic...
Thank you.
...that's coming around, the truck traffic that's coming around. I stated the time of operations, right? We're clear on that, right?
Yes.
And I stated about the amount of traffic that's coming through that way, coming back down Redwine, going back down North Desert, back to Camp Creek.
Yes, and I'll do the best I can to be obedient, to be obedient to those questions.
Okay.
Right now, the Atlanta Community Food Bank has five tractor-trailer trucks. Again, five tractor-trailer trucks. What we're saying is we may go to ten. Now, when you start thinking about alternate uses, whether those are grocery stores or commercial facilities, they're likely to have deliveries that are also made by tractor-trailer trucks. So I don't see if this property is going to be developed, that you... Uh, so I don't see if this property is gonna be developed, that you're going to be able to do so in a way unless it's all single-family residential. If it has any commercial in it, it's gonna be subject to tractor-trailer truck deliveries, deliveries, box trucks deliveries. What we do, uh, and I, and I, uh, what we do is, uh, study to evaluate the ability of the current infrastructure to support, uh, the facilities that a city has. And so that's been evaluated by our traffic engineers, we provided the studies to the city's traffic staff. They've looked at them and concluded that the existing infrastructure and more particularly the improved infrastructure will accommodate all of the improvements that are proposed along North Desert Drive and Redwine Road. So there isn't a problem with the capacity of Redwine Road and North Desert Drive to accommodate the proposed development from all of the professionals that have looked at it.
You know, I want to go back and say this to you, the professionals looked at that entrance coming in off of Camp Creek into the marketplace and that is a mess in itself, because people don't know to move or what to do when they get, they looked at that too. So let's, let's just, you know, Larry, let's just be real up in here, they can look at it, but we got a problem trying to get off of Camp Creek into the marketplace now. So let's, you know, and I mean, and not directed towards you, but it, it's, it's, it is a concern for the citizens, that traffic. It is a major concern. Whether that traffic is gonna come through their neighborhood again, like it was used to, or not. You know, so, uh, for me, you know, that's why I am, that's what my concern, I'm not against the food bank, I think the food bank does a great job in the work that it do, but I am concerned about the environmental issues and the traffic and the concern of the residents of that community and those people who will be frequently going over there, continually stopping at the Camp Creek marketplace, which is a great economic gain for us and we certainly want to keep it and we don't want the people who are renting those apartments to start losing tenants because they can't get in and out of there and then we got a blighted eyes over because we got apartments over there that people are not renting. So those are the things, I'm looking at it from a holistic standpoint. So thank you so very much, you've answered my question.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dingle.
I have a question.
Ms. McKnight has a question?
Yes, I have actually several, but I, um, it's some related to the, um, traffic concerns. Um, when is the proposed year for build, is it, is-
The proposed build out for, uh, all of the traffic improvements, including the roundabout that is designed to resolve the problem that Mr. Fan is talking about, is 2020.
And the proposed time for the infrastructure?
Uh, for, for the infrastructure to be installed is 2020, for food bank to be completed with this con, with this, uh, construction is also 2020.
So the same year that the changes for the traffic will be taking places when you propose an actual building?
Yes, ma'am. What we did, because of Mr. Brown's question, was really to treat it with the level of dignity that it deserved.
Say that one more time, please.
When Mr. Brown, Three Brown asked a question, uh, he was concerned about traffic and so that became our concern. And the first thing we did was convene a meeting with the city planning, city traffic staff, the Georgia Department of Transportation, as well as the CID, uh, the commu, uh, the, Community Improvement District. And we met for two hours. Out of that meeting, what we looked at was, are the projects budgeted, funded? Which ones are funded? And so, uh, the response from the Georgia Department of Transportation, the CID, was or, and is that, the diverging diamond is funded? Is it under design and let for contract? And so for each of those projects, we went through a list of all four of them and they're all scheduled, all funded, not having to raise or allocate the funds, the funds already been allocated by the respective jurisdictions, um, to build those improvements, which are, again, designed to be encl, completed at the same time. We are prepared to be under construction and maybe about complete and ready to occupy. So our concern was that we're not coming in too early and finding out that the improved infrastructure is not available to us and then we do in fact create the problem Mr. Fan that you're talking about. So we took that very seriously, looked at it very seriously, and that's why I think your professional staff, the traffic division of the City of East Point is raising, not raising an objection, but supporting, uh, the, uh, the project on the basis of its impact on traffic.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes, and just to be clear, um, I think the, listening to the residents in the community about the Atlanta Food Bank, um, I think, um, so the question is, that your customers to the food bank, to the area, um, is not, although you serving, the purpose of the food bank is actually serving the community, but those would not be the customers actually coming to the building, is that correct?
If I could implore for a moment and ask the CEO of the food bank to respond to that question.
Thank you.
I think he would be more capable of doing so.
Okay. And if you will, just please state your first and last name and your current address.
Sure, so my name is Kyle Wade, I'm the CEO of the Atlanta Community Food Bank and our address is seven thirty-two Joseph E. Lowry Boulevard in Atlanta, Georgia. Uh, and I believe the question is around what constituencies, groups of people come to the food bank.
Right, I just want to make sure that there's-
So the, the people who come to the, we do not serve food directly to individuals on our campus. Uh, we, we do not, um, provide direct service in the form of food to people on our campus. The people who visit our campus are first, are employees, uh, second, they're the agency partners. We have around six hundred, uh, community-based organizations, many of them are churches, uh, seven, about seventy percent of them are faith-based, uh, organizations, you have a few here in the City of East Point. Uh, they come to our facility to pick up food, uh, and usually the people who are coming are either employees or, or volunteers, um, of that, uh, of those partner organizations. Uh, the third constituency that comes to our, uh, food bank are volunteers, uh, and those volunteers are generally, um, corporate groups, so there are folks from Coca-Cola, Home Depot, Cisco Foods, Delta, et cetera. Um, there are school groups, so kids of a variety of schools throughout the region, um, or they're just private citizens who, who want to come and, uh, find a way to give back in a, in a place that's safe and clean and, and accessible. Uh, and then the last group of folks who come to the, uh, well, I should say two more groups, a, a fourth group that comes are, are people who participate in nutrition education classes, uh, so many of whom are seniors, uh, who are coming to learn how they can prepare healthier food, uh, in, in their homes. Uh, and then lastly, the last group of folks who come are community groups who use our facility as a community meeting space. Um, so they could be, again, companies, they could be, uh, just community groups, uh, homeowners associations, uh, we've had political leaders come to our food bank, uh, not long ago, we had the Surgeon General of the United States host a, um, a discussion, an open forum, a town hall on the opioid crisis, uh, that we housed at the, at the food bank and so people interested in that topic, uh, were there. So the folks who are coming to the food bank are, uh, those kind of groups. They are, they are not the people that we serve, uh, and, uh, and I would just point out that the people that we serve, um, more than sixty percent of them are working families with kids. Um, so there's an image of the people that we serve to that I think is not entirely accurate. Um, but even so, those folks are not the ones who are coming to our facility.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'm sorry, that's all for now.
Thank you.
Any more comments, question, okay, Commissioner Bell?
I would like to know, um, if you guys can go through and explain how this particular site was chosen?
Yes, we can do that. We've actually brought, uh, that's gonna be sort of a twofold answer. Uh, we brought Chris Echols from CBRE, that's the real estate firm that, that found the site for them, and I'm gonna have him come up to the microphone.
Good evening. So I need to say my name and address. Is that right? Uh, Chris Echols, two eight five nine Craven Ridge Drive, Brookhaven, Georgia.
Can you speak up just a little bit, please?
Sorry, Chris Echols, two eight five nine Craven Ridge Drive, Brookhaven, Georgia.
With George?
Brookhaven, Georgia.
Okay.
So I, I'm with CBRE, we're a large, uh, commercial real estate firm and we do property searches every day for clients of ours that are looking for, to find a facility or to find a site to go build a facility such as the, the food bank here. So I, I thought, I, I would just describe what our general search is, how we worked through this one, how we came up with, uh, with, with this site as we went through. But additionally, what we always do is talk to our client, figure out what the requirements of the search are, what are the needs, where do we, where do you need to be, what are the geographic parameters that we need, that we need to have. So when we sat down with, with, uh, with Kyle and Deborah and the Atlanta Community Food Bank, we found out there are four main requirements to, to this project. Number one, is it needed to be within a decently close proximity to these companies, the volunteer, because their company is somebody, because the organization is based on volunteer, uh, activity, that it needed to have some close proximity to Fortune 500, other large companies that could come lead to the volunteer effort. So the geography of it needed to be inside the perimeter or shortly just outside, preferably on the, on the west side of town, northwest, southwest. Uh, and then the second main requirement would be, uh, there's a, there's a budget. This was any project, there's a budget that's there, we had to sit to a certain budget for what land costs are and what's included in land cost is also what the development and site cost for that land are. So we had to, and when we're looking at sites, we have to look at, is there, are there streams on it, are there public utilities that have to be removed and what are the costs of that? How does that factor into the overall site cost that we have? The, uh, third main requirement that we looked into was that it needed to be within a, uh, a new market tax eligible district. Uh, you know, from their budgetary standpoint, that created a significant savings and allowed them to get this budget in place by having that, uh, having that, you know, going into a new market tax eligible area. Uh, and the third was, and the fourth was just the size. We needed something that could house a three hundred thousand square foot facility with five hundred car parks, uh, and the ability to, to put that onto a site, is twenty-five acres, give or take. You can, I, I dialed it down to about twenty to twenty-two to see if there was a perfect site in there that everything could fit just right, but it's, it's generally gonna be about twenty-five acres when you include buffers. So then I went through, we use a couple of search databases, CoStar, LoopNet, we also have, uh, we have one of the largest commercial real estate firms here in town, so I use all the brokerage network that I have inside of our office to see who knows about sites that are off-market, that are not listed on the normal sites. I go out to the, to the outside firms, uh, to see what they might know and then it's just good old-fashioned shoe leather. I go out, drive the market, I do Google aerial searches, I spent days and weeks looking over and poring over different sites that may work. I'd go find who had the, uh, the tax records to who owned it, call them, see if they're interested in selling. So this was an extensive process that lasted, uh, it lasted quite some time to try to dial down to what might work. So when you get an initial list, that gets pared down because of various reasons, it doesn't check the boxes on, uh, on all the requirements that they have. Uh, and then we pair that list down to, uh, a short list of sites that actually would fit and for a number of reasons, cost being one. Uh, one, one of them wouldn't agree to sell it, the site, couldn't get to a point where they could sell it, one had infrastructure problems and needed to build roads, uh, and us building roads added a number, a big enough number to the budget where it went out of budget and couldn't make sense anymore. Retrofitting an existing building, the cost of that was greater than building, was outside of the budget again. So there are a number of factors why, why certain sites were eliminated from where we were. We did test fits, uh, on several sites where the architects went in, laid the building down, tried to see how it would fit on the site. So at the end of the day, when all the data was gathered, the food bank decided that this site was the most viable site to fit into the budget, to put them where they needed to be. It gave them a good community presence, they were close enough to, uh, to the volunteer effort that they, that they needed and, uh, and the most important thing, the building fits onto the site with, uh, with the buffer that's left there. I know the question has been asked, well, why not, you know, I don't, how much you want me to expand on my answer, but-
Well, I mean, I just want to make sure that Mr., that Commissioner Jarrett, that Mr. Bell's, um, question is answered, but-
Sure.
I mean, I know you can talk days about how you came up with the site.
Yes, I can go on and on about this site solution.
But, um, I don't think that that's what we want to do tonight, so-
Okay.
Has he answered your question sufficiently?
He has, but I would like to know a little bit more.
Yeah. Okay. So could you make sure that you-
So the question, I, I think that was raised here-
Mr. Bell-
Why, why it couldn't go somewhere else? That's what I'm, that's what I was looking for too.
That's what I was about to get to.
So I think when, what happens is people look at sites and see land and, and, uh, and see nothing there, they think, oh, well, that, it should be able to go there. Trust me, that if we didn't have to go through this process and there was a site that was there that was zoned appropriately, that could work for everything, that, that would be where they would have chosen to go. But in the industrial park across the street, the business park, the large majority of that is owned by Duke. Duke's core business is to own and lease buildings. Uh, one of the other objectives, I guess I should have said at the beginning, requirements, was the food bank has to purchase, they have to own the facility. Uh, and Kyle can explain why that is, but, but, uh, the, the short answer is, from a fundraising effort, uh, they need to raise for bricks and mortar versus operating costs. It's, it's nearly impossible to raise the money for that, so they need to own the facility. Duke won't sell any of their buildings, they won't sell any of their sites, we've asked repeatedly, I've talked to them about multiple opportunities over there, they won't, they won't sell them. Uh, other sites over there that, uh, that I looked at and tried to make work either had, uh, power lines or gas lines running through the site that it would be far too expensive to try to relocate to make the site work, streams that are running through it that you can't do it. Bottom line is with the, with the, with the, I guess the big development craze that we've seen here, if there's a site that'll hold three hundred thousand square feet, it was taken by a developer two years ago, year ago, year and a half ago. I mean, it, it, there's just nothing left that you can, uh, that you can go find and put a building of this size. So that leads us to areas that had buildings that had, that fit everything but may have, uh, some challenges, so, you know, all of the sites that we test fit all needed to be rezoned, that would, that would have worked for this, all would have had, would have, would have taken rezoning. So hopefully that answers a little bit of your question about why not somewhere else.
Okay. I, I appreciate the answer. I have a question for, uh, Ms. Clayton. Can you, um, can you elaborate on the process on how that you chose the CUP classification and why they, you skipped over, or rather not chose to apply with business park or any other, uh, classification that is applicable or at least close to being applicable here?
Absolutely. Um, we do take the position that the kinds of uses, and again, I think I talked about this earlier, the difference between the building and the use of the building. Um, and so obviously there was emphasis in the staff report on the size of the storage and warehouse space versus the size of the office space, but then we also talked about those numbers at regular warehouses, how small the offices were, how there was no other additional amenities because their function is to be a warehouse. And I think I also mentioned that of the seventy million pounds of food that the food bank distributed last year, twenty-three million pounds of it never touched the facility. And we also have this community engagement process with the volunteer work that is, um, actually really kind of fun, you should come try it sometime, but, um, when they do these group activities, it's almost like a pep rally, they have a person whose job it is to lead the people to assemble these packages for the church folks and the partner agencies to come pick up in their vans and buses. And so the idea was they wanted it to be accessible to the Martin, they wanted it to be accessible to the marketplace, they wanted their employees to come to a place where, you know, they feel like they were part of something and part of the community. Uh, and that was made clear very early on and it was very much made clear to me when I actually visited the existing food bank and saw exactly what goes on there. And, um, you know, obviously the firm has represented Duke and other entities that build warehouse spaces in the business park and this was nothing like what those buildings do and what they are and what they look like. Um, but from a technical standpoint, there's no BP classification under growing residential character area and the future land use designation for this piece of property is growing residential. And so what does that leave you with? Well, it leaves you with commercial, which is what it's already zoned for, and under, um, both commercial zonings and actually any of the commercial zoning designations in the East Point code, something like this, there's no definition that matches. And community facility is actually not listed anywhere else in the East Point code as a term for allowable use, so it is only under the CUP. They talk about recreation facilities, they talk about community centers, they talk about things of that nature, they talk about public-private recreation facilities, they talk about, like I said, community centers, churches, things of that nature. This is the only classification that has community facility listed. So with mixed use, which is also in the growing residential character area, that was one of the- of the topics of conversation we talked with staff and the attorneys about, well, can we do that? Problem with mixed use is unlike CUP, which is, it is a classification that contemplates a housing component, but is not required under the permitted uses and also under any other mandate in that code. For mixed use, there is a residential mandate. And so there is no interest in the food bank from leasing, or selling, or providing any sort of housing option on that piece of property. What they wanted to leave as green space, they wanted to leave alone because they have the needs for that size facility. Once those are met, they do not have any other interest in developing that land, which is why that condition was imposed. So I suppose that's a very long version of the story, but what we're looking at here is a square peg and a round hole. There was some talk about City of Atlanta zoning classification, the property the current food bank is on. The industrial classification in Atlanta, my former employer, is a permissive classification. So just because a property is on an industrial classified piece of land doesn't mean that it's an industrial property, if that makes sense. It's just that at the time of the purchase, when the Atlanta Community Food Bank found its existing building and was able to run the capital campaign and get the kind of funds to use this building, it happened to be a building on an industrial piece of property, if that makes sense. But it doesn't mean that that building is industrial. There's lots of other uses allowed in the City of Atlanta under that classification. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I have one more question. So my question is for staff. If we were to not approve this...
Recommend it.
Yes. If we were not to recommend approval, is there any legal ramifications that we need to be aware of?
Well, that tends to be a legal question for attorney and clients, which generally would be privileged. That said, I can speak in general terms. You know, the applicant has in front of you a request for rezoning. If at any point, when, you are only a recommending body first and foremost. They must go to city council. If city council ends up denying the rezoning, then the applicant, if they believe in some way that that decision is erroneous, they do have legal recourse to, you know, go to litigation, go to court and challenge that decision. As it relates to planning and zoning recommendation, planning and zoning commission recommendation, you are merely a recommending body. And so your recommendation, if it's for denial, would be one of the many factors that city council would have to look at in making their final legislative decision as to whether or not they're going to approve this zoning.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay?
I do have one quick question, I promise.
Sure.
It's not a three-part or four-part.
Okay, that's okay.
The property that is not going to be developed, is there anything that would preclude you from selling it?
Well, it's one parcel, and we do have the anticipation that the city will make good on our zoning condition, that the land will be dedicated to the City of East Point. Now, if that doesn't...
How much is that? That piece that you were talking about dedicating to East Point?
Let me show you.
How much is that? Because that's for the walking trail, is that right? That's what the initial conversation is?
It would be the 46 acres. Forty-six acres on which there's no development.
So you're saying the city would, you're going to donate 46 acres to the city?
Any of the unused portion of the land is open for donation to the city, and if it is dedicated to them, once it's dedicated to them, it's city property, and where they decide to put the designated walking trails, it's still going to be city property even if it's not those walking trails, if it turns out that the land gets dedicated, all of it gets dedicated to the city, or a large portion of it does. So that's the anticipated outcome of that condition, hopefully.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Mitchell.
I need to say something.
Sure.
In addressed this body. Commissioner Fan and I served on planning and zoning back in the day when spot zoning was the norm for the City of East Point. Spot zoning killed, was killing this city until the vision came to stop the spot zoning so that East Point can get some variance of a comprehensive land use plan, or put the thought in there so that East Point can grow into what it is today, and what it could be. That took some time to do. Do you remember that, Mr. Fan?
Yes, I do.
One of the things that Mr. Fan also spoke about, and for those of you that know me, I do my research, I make tough decisions. I vetted this process seriously, and tonight made it clear what I have, what I need to do. But first, let me ask you, the trip study that was turned in by the applicant, did you find that genuine or disingenuous with the traffic study? How did staff feel about that?
I can tell you, the application was given to our transportation engineer. He didn't have any comments regarding it, so that's the only thing that I can give you, because of course, I don't have that professional knowledge of it.
Okay, so there was really no objections to it. We knew when the creation of Camp Creek Marketplace that there was going to be traffic issues, even when we served on council together. One thing that we were able to do was to try to alleviate some of that traffic, was finally get a road built through Duke Realty to Washington Road, and it took how many years for that to happen, Larry, you know? Took 10 years. We put that out there when we served on council. My fear, my concern that Commissioner Fan had is the same thing, is traffic, 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 traffic. There will be some relief when L Circle is done. I made a recommendation years ago that I believe that Desert Drive should be taken all the way out to Greenbriar to alleviate some of that traffic that's on there. I will, if, again, and you guys know, I fought for you, and I continue to fight for you, to keep Redwine closed, to keep Elizabeth closed. I threatened to lay into the road out there for you, but I was recently affected. I volunteer weekly at ACG Hillier Elementary School, and this is my fear. When they improved the school that I support greatly and go there, they moved and built 40 feet up to the property line before it was over 100 yards away. But they could do that, they went through the proper procedures. My fear is the unknown. And if things are true, that... We spoke about a hotel. I would love a hotel, as most of you know, I bought a lot, I helped bring a lot of business to the City of East Point. Because that helps alleviate a lot of the tax burdens or financial burdens from the residents. I believe in development, smart development. But we talked about a hotel, would love for a hotel to be back there. But what scares me, if the traffic study is true, is that we're talking about almost 3,000 trips coming that way. Mixed use, which I think is a great, is a great opportunity, but then again, we're talking about another 6,000 trips coming through there. We're looking at tractor trailers, we're looking at cars, we're looking at consistency coming through there, and what will that do to the traffic? That would exacerbate the traffic situation, that's my fear. Those hotel, mixed-use development, office space, it's my understanding that they can be, they can just come there now without any requests for rezoning or anything, and they can build up to 40 feet, we can only have a 40-foot buffer? Is that true? Come on, staff, help me.
I would definitely have to refer to our zoning ordinance when it comes down to the specific buffers for each of those types of uses.
I think that was a part, I think the applicant said that was a part of their study, and I'm just trying to verify and validate. When I go to my backyard, and I love ACG Hillier because I volunteer, the school is on my porch, and we're talking about dedicating 46 acres, which undisturbed with the natural trees and probably extra buffers or whatever, berm or whatever put there. And what's the closest house? Can someone tell me what is the closest house? I think it was, okay, Mr. White, what is the...
The closest house to the parking lot?
Yes.
It's 161 feet from the back edge of the parking lot. Closest house to the building is, I believe it was 294. Actually, yes, 386 to the actual building.
Okay. Oh, thank you. I was just waiting for them to... The unknown scares me. So as they look to validate my question...
It appears, Commissioner Mitchell, that the answer to your question in regards to landscape buffers adjacent to any residential in a C1, C2 district would be a 50-foot rear yard buffer adjacent to the residential, and 10 feet improvement setback from all road And I think currently, for some reason, they're showing 100-foot undisturbed buffer, which is what would be required for industrial, that's interesting, I think, on the applicant's pipeline, they show a 100-foot buffer, but under the zoning classification that they're seeking, only a 50-foot buffer would be required.
50-foot, which is, the school is in my yard, and the unknown with these other entities being able to come, it don't have to come to the neighborhood, it scares me. That's just a statement that I wanted to make and make aware, that I live in your community, you know it, I talk to my neighbors, I've talked to some of you, Ms., well, I won't say who we talked to. But this is a tough decision, one of the toughest I've had, I'm going to have to make sense, I'm a lifelong citizen of the City of East Point. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Any more comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, Commissioners, there is a motion to recommend denial of the rezoning made by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Tucker, and also a motion to approve the withdrawal of the variance. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay.
Nay.
Okay, so we'll have to do a roll call, and so just to be clear, this vote is to deny the rezoning and to approve the withdrawal of the variance, okay?
Commissioner Lovett?
No.
Commissioner Bell?
No.
Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Fan?
What's the vote for?
You to deny.
My vote is to deny.
And my vote is to deny.
That's why, that's why I restated the motion.
The motion, yeah, the motion on the table is to deny.
That's right, so please listen very carefully. The motion on the floor is to recommend denial of the rezoning and to approve the withdrawal of the variance. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay.
Nay.
Okay, so roll call.
Commissioner Lovett?
Denial.
So it's confused because...
You are supporting the motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay, if you are supporting the motion, because the motion is in the negative for a denial, you say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
No.
Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Fan?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucker?
Aye.
Commissioner McKnight? I believe Commissioner...
So...
So it's three aye, three nay.
So they're...
It's a tie vote.
It's three, four, and three against, Sean, you got to vote right to tie, Sean. That what it means, Sean.
If, in fact, the votes are accurate, it appears that Commissioner Lovett, Commissioner Fan, and Commissioner Tucker voted in favor of denying or recommending denial of the zoning and withdrawal of the variance. So the inverse of that is that Commissioner Bell, Commissioner McKnight, and Commissioner Mitchell voted against recommending denial of the zoning and withdrawal of the variance. If those, if there are any inaccuracies, speak now or forever hold your peace, because it looks like, under those circumstances, Commissioner Atkins is going to have to cast the deciding vote.
Right.
To break the tie.
So is that accurate? It's accurate for everybody's vote, okay? And my vote is for nay.
So the motion to deny the rezoning and withdrawal of the variance fails.
So at this time, Commissioners, since that motion failed, I'll entertain a motion to dispose of this item, because we must dispose of the item.
Motion to dispose.
No, no, it has to be, we've already had a motion to deny, and so there has to be a different motion. That's the only way we can dispose.
Commissioner Chair, I move that the body denies or disposes of the motion.
We've already, we've already had a motion to deny.
The motion to deny fails because it only received three affirmative votes. Now it can move forward with, sorry, for it to move forward to city council, there needs to be an affirmative vote on the motion, on a motion that passes. The only obvious inverse motion is a motion to approve.
Right.
And my vote still going to be nay. So, I mean, so we're going to end up right back to where we are.
It can move forward to city council without a recommendation from this body. However, I would encourage the commission to provide city council with some guidance beyond no recommendation.
Right. Commissioner McKnight?
Okay. I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning from C2 with conditions in CL to CUP. I don't have to include the concurrent purpose. To CUP with the self-imposed conditions, though.
And those would be the 13 conditions tendered this evening?
The 13 conditions. With the withdrawal for variance.
Okay. There's been a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning to include the self-imposed conditions from the applicant, and to accept the withdrawal of the variance for parking. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner McKnight, seconded by Commissioner Mitchell, that this body recommends approval of this agenda item to rezone the property at Zero Red Ryan Road from C2C Commercial Business District with conditions, and CL Commercial Limited to CUP Community Unit Plan, and also to accept the withdrawal of the variance. Comments, questions, or concerns?
Call for the question.
Before we...
Commissioner Fan can't do that.
He's called, he's called, he's called. So all in favor to accept, to recommend rezoning, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay.
Nay.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Lovett? Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fan?
Nay.
Commissioner Tucker? Commissioner McKnight? Commissioner Mitchell?
Aye.
It's a tie.
Aye.
The motion carries.
So the motion that carries, as I understand it, just to make it very clear, is to recommend approval of the rezoning with the 13 conditions tendered by the applicant, and withdrawal of the requested parking variance.
Yes. Okay. Okay, our next agenda item, we're on announcements. Staff, are there any announcements?
No.
Okay, so I do have an announcement I would like for staff. This is not really an announcement, it's a request. I think that we need to do better, and I don't know how we do this, I don't know if it's going to be with our AV folk, or if it's a budget issue, but I... I don't know if it's going to be with our AV folk or if it's a budget issue, but I think that we definitely need a handheld microphone here so that when we have applicants presenting work, it is very disrespectful to have images in front of our audience that's here. So as a city, I think that we could do better for those who are here for our meeting, so if you would take that back. I don't know if it's a budget issue or if it is something that would be relegated to our contractor to do the audio visual, but we need to do better, okay? At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Fan, do you have any announcement?
No, I do not.
Okay. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner Tucker. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. This meeting is now adjourned.